Okay, so meeting came to order at 6:01 PM. It just got done updating that the Police Commission updated their rules and regulations with regards to complaints and charges. Per state statute, the charges come under the jurisdiction of the Commission and complaints are processed in accordance with Policy 1010. Personnel complaints do not fall under the commission. I then went back and took a look at some of the complaint documentation that was in the file. Because I know Public Safety has spent a lot of time talking about complaints. And in the interim, however you intend to proceed with the conversation, I just wanted to let you know some of the things I did to just administratively update some of the documentation that we had. First, I replaced the old PDF complaint form with the updated PDF complaint form on the Police Department website. Complaints can be specified on that form now that complaints provided in paper may be received at the Police Department, the Village Hall front desk. They may also be submitted into the white drop box located behind Village Hall. Forms can also be submitted by email. So now that form is actually in a fillable format online. So someone can go to the website, type in their information, whatever that is, and submit it right into the village. We've reached out or I've reached out to the City of Milwaukee for translation services with regards to their forms and also to inquire just some of the the languages that they were translating to, to kind of bring those back to translate our forms. And we're in progress of getting that done and up on the website. There was discussion, I could find in the past notes about loss of late language that was removed. And so that language has been removed from the form. However, we are required by statute to have people acknowledge that. So that language is now located on the pamphlet. For complaints and the individuals submitting the complaint must acknowledge that they have read the complaint procedure brochure. So that part has been updated. I then requested the Police Department to update their policy to talk about some of the things that have been routinely discussed in the past. Whereas, you know, whoever submits the complaint, if we do have contact information, that we will send them notification that we have received the complaint and advising them of the timeline and how the complaints are processed. Monthly updates, the number and the status of complaints will be listed on the department's monthly report. We've been posting monthly reports now online for, I want to say the last year, Tom. Am I correct?
I will double check, but yeah, it sounds right. Yes.
So along with those complaints, someone would have the number, the status. And then the goal again is to complete the complaint review within 90 days. Trustee Stoker.
Thank you. I was just wondering, the monthly updates in the department's monthly report, is that online? Is that on the Police Department website?
Yes, it's been online for, I want to say it's about a year. Tom's checking, but it's.
Okay, so that stuff, I noticed lower in the memo, it talks about the nature of the complaint. Will that be on that monthly report also?
Yes.
Okay, because on the bullet points, it says number and status, but not nature of. Oh, it just talks about the nature of the complaint after the reference to the HRC. I just wanted to be clear that the nature of the complaint would be on that monthly report also?
Yes, that's the intention. So the same information report that the HRC was provided is the same information that would be uploaded.
And what's the anticipated date of starting this?
Now.
I could just start, sorry to cut in quickly. I hope you don't mind, Trustee Stoker. Just for the record, could you, as we continue this conversation, could you at some point touch upon the HRC process? I just want to make clear that there is an oversighting process for the complaints. It's just not the Police Commission, it's the HRC. Sorry, sorry, Trustee Stoker, I just want to kind of background in a little bit.
No, thank you.
Trustee Stoker, can I just finish going through the memo?
Sure.
Okay, I just wasn't done. And then maybe I can open it up at that point to questions so we can get through the information in front of us. So the next thing that I actually was going to hit on was, moving forward, the Police Department is going to review their reports with the Human Relations Commission. We're going to start to do, you know, they do their reports monthly, but we're going to go to them quarterly. Because just that sometimes, you know, we'll start there and see if we need more or less and adjust. With the respect to the complaints, and this is where Trustee Stoker was noting, you know, some of the stats that they'll collect. They'll track the number of complaints received, the nature of the complaint, race, ethnicity, gender, if known, because people aren't required to put that on the form. Disposition of the complaint and list, list with their monthly reports. All complaints, and this is the way it's always been, so I apologize if I'm being redundant. But as I went back and looked at some of the committee's notes, it almost appeared to me as if people didn't believe that complaints are subject to open records. So I just wanted to be clear that all complaints are subject to open records. They've always been subject to open records. But per state statute, we do and are under the statutory court requirement to also redact. So in some cases with that process, individuals may be notified of the request prior to release in accordance with state statutes. So those things have always been a part of the fabric here in terms of how we've responded to people. I know that we've, you know, received requests for those in the past, but I just wanted to kind of make that point clear. Because it was probably just my lack of attendance in those meetings, because I was at other meetings that maybe some of that got lost in translation. So then, starting here, you know, we're starting towards the close of the year. What I'd like to do is update how this is working in the next, over the next six months, and then come back to you just to provide an update. And then if you guys want to talk anymore about the form, feel free to, but I think that I hit most of the salient points that are, that were in record. I just wanted to make sure that information was updated. And now at this time, I'll entertain any other questions that you may have. Trustee Orndrefer.
Yeah, there had been some discussion about making the form available in the library. So it's not necessarily, you know, in Village Hall or at the police station. When I went on a tour, you know, I casually mentioned that to the library director, seemed receptive to that idea. Is that anything that we're going to look to pursue?
Actually, it's funny, last week I just asked Tom to coordinate that, or interim chief Leventhal, with the library and the Village Hall customer service people as well. Just so they were aware, that was there.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Stoker, I wanted to bounce back to you. I know, I think, did you have anything else? Because I.
No, thank you. I think this is just a lot of great work on this by the staff. One question, and just to be clear, we are giving up on the informal versus formal. We have one complaint. And so there will be no more dealing with formal and informal, which I think is good. I think we have the flexibility we need here to address people who have concerns about retribution or reprisal. I did think, it seemed to me someplace on the complaint disposition, the person making the complaint will be notified of its disposition once the process is completed, but you can't do that if it's anonymous. I think you just need to make that clear on the form, correct? What happens with the complaint once submitted the primary? Go ahead.
No, I said that's inherent, you know, in the past, a lot of, that's why that information becomes important, because typically people need to follow up and ask additional questions. However, if there is no one listed, then there will be no one to follow up with.
Right, and I think, I guess I would just add that in the disposition part. You will be notified of its disposition once it's completed unless you are an anonymous person and you don't leave any contact. I mean, you know, it just has to be very clear. That's just my personal opinion. And then it says, once submitted, the primary responsibility of the investigation of a personnel complaint. I think we're missing a word there, with the captain of the police. Do we have two captains?
Trustee Stoker, which document are you looking at?
I'm on the flyer.
Oh, okay, thank you. Sorry, I just wasn't sure where you were at.
Because the other form is very, it just has two prompts, right? The one I saw online has a one prompt for describe what happened and another prompt, I can't remember, is very simple.
Correct.
But this is the flyer. So the investigation, the responsibility lies with, resides or rests with the captain of the police. Do we have, I thought we have two captains now.
We do, but they each going to have different job responsibilities. But it could happen with either captain, depending on the type of investigation, who gets assigned it.
Okay, so it'd be with a captain.
Be another person, it could be a sergeant as well if it gets delegated down.
Right, and that's in the next sentence, the chief of police or authorized XYZ, right? Okay, so then I guess just, where's the, if someone is not happy with what has happened with their complaint, what is the recourse?
They could contact anyone at the village, but this is the complaint process.
Okay, and so if someone thinks that they have not been, their, whatever they want hasn't been, they're not happy with the outcome and they want it pursued farther.
They could attempt to pursue formal charges with the Police Commission, but it would have to be something that would fall under the commission's purview.
Imagine, not just to speak totally out of turn, but I imagine you could also file a lawsuit, depending on the nature of the complaint.
Okay, good to know.
I have a, I have a couple of things. I know that we moved the language that was required by statute. We ended up moving that into the brochure and having them, having any complaint and check a box that they had read the brochure. How do we, and maybe I missed this within the packet, and maybe it's good to have on the record anyways. How do we make sure that the brochure, how do we make sure when they file a complaint is submitted online, that brochure is made available?
It is online at this point in time, and then they check a box on that form that determines or states their acknowledgement.
So we say you need to read it and it's available online, basically.
Correct, it's like, it's also listed right above the form itself.
Okay.
Yeah, the brochure is there and it won't allow them to submit it online unless they have indicated whether they've read it or not.
Okay, I mean, in the future, it might be nice to have that part of the prompt be a hyperlink to the brochure itself. I mean, that's probably day two work at this point.
Oh, sure, we can hyperlink them. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I mean. Go ahead.
Nope.
I was gonna say, as close as we can get into the actual checkbox, the better. If it can actually be in the checkboxes, something that they can check, or something that they can actually click on and go to. I just want to make sure that they're, you know, more so in the statutory language, putting that out of mind. I just want to make sure they're getting all the information about their complaint that they can, because I think that's important. Other question would be, and this kind of goes to some of what Trustee Stoker was just doing. If we want to make further revisions to the complaint, to the complaint forms, I know there was a lot of interest from the community in the content of these forms themselves. This is something that we could, we could bring back to public safety for a review at some point in the future.
That's completely up to this committee's purview. Again, the assistance that I was wanting to provide today was just, I was going through a lot of things that were outstanding. Wanted to get things up to date to where they are right now in real time, but based upon the commission's changes in rules and regulations and in these items. So just wanted to advise you in terms of how I proceeded with updating. And we can take any direction in the later point in time, but just did want to get these things up to date, because they're not overly challenging. It's just getting them up to date.
No, I think this, I think this is great. I think this is great as a first step, certainly. You know, I think it's great to get it online and get this process going. So this is great work. This is, this is good work. This is really good work to have in place. I just wanted to ask if we wanted to do more on the backend, what our process would be. So with that, I will, I know we have some members in the public on the phone, so I would ask if we have any comments. And if we do, please raise your hand and name and address, and then feel free to make your comment. So I'll open it up for public comment now.
And Trustee Warren, I just wanted to let you know, I'm going to make Tom Leventhal the host now, because I'm going to need to bow out of the meeting in about seven minutes to start up Public Works.
Got it. Okay, seeing, do you have what you need? I think this was just an update. I am not scheduled for, for any kind of.
Just an update.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you, Rebecca. Oh, Liz, I see you, I see you have, I see you have your hand up. Go ahead.
Well, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Good.
Wait, okay, I guess my air buds are not working. Thank you very much for all of your work on the complaint form and all the discussions that had have happened as a result of, that have occurred as a result of all these, the complaint form discussions. And I am speaking right now for myself, not for any group. I wanted to ask if the Police Department's monthly reports could be updated. They're currently, it stops at September. I'm sure that's just in the process of interim chief Leventhal coming aboard. I think that's something new used to do, so if that could be updated, that'd be great.
The monthly report for October has been submitted. I just haven't had a chance to review it before it gets posted.
Okay, great, thank you. And then my other question was, who, when these complaints, and perhaps I missed this, when these complaints are submitted, who receives them?
It depends on how they come in. If they come in, in writing, then it'll go to, essentially, well, it'll go to myself at the moment. But the administrative captain is who is going to be the first one to receive the written complaints and do the initial review of them. And then determine what type of investigation needs to happen with the complaint and who will be assigned to complete that. If they come in verbally, then the supervisor on duty would be the one to receive the complaint, document the information regarding the complaint. That information would then get, if it's not resolved at that point in time, if the situation has not been resolved, then that would be forwarded again to the administrative captain, who would then do the initial review after the preparing of the information and then determine where it would get assigned from there.
Okay, and all of this is subject, as you mentioned, to open records requests. So is there any other body receiving this information, like Public Safety? Or at this point, it's solely within Police Department?
Correct.
Okay.
One clarification, though, the Human Relations Commission will be meeting with a representative of the department quarterly. And then they'll have an opportunity to speak there and, you know, answer any questions that they can at that time.
Okay, so they receive like a quarterly report to, to have this discussion?
Correct, but monthly, all that information will also be provided online.
Okay.
The other monthly reports as well.
Right, perfect. And then, sorry for my list of questions. Then, the, even if there is a person who is, just for clarification sake, someone is submitting a complaint anonymously. This process is still followed through, through disposition, even if there isn't somebody to report. When the final disposition, it's still occurring. I just want to make sure that that's being followed through, regardless of whether someone's anonymous or not.
The complaint, the anonymous complaints will be investigated as far as we can take them with whatever information that we are able to develop during the course of it at that point in time. If, once we hit a, you know, a dead end, then it's kind of hard to continue from there if we don't have anybody to go back to to try to ask clarifying questions to. But we will take it as far as we can take it.
Yeah, okay, okay, great, thank you.
Liz. Okay. Now closed public comment, and Rebecca, I think this is, you got everything you. This discussion, so I.
Just wanted to update you guys, so you didn't, weren't wondering why maybe something's changed or been modified. So there you go, have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you, thanks Rebecca. Captain Leventhal, I think, next on the agenda is the pursuit policy. And I think this is, either you or Officer Gavani, I'm not sure which one of you is, you know, different sides of me, which one are you presenting on this?
Well, it's, I'll be the main presenter, but Officer Gavani is basically here to also help answer any kind of questions or, you know, clarify some items here as well. So we had brought this back, or had brought this to the public safety here last month, or was it two months ago? I forget the exact date off the top of my head now. But in, there were some questions and concerns that were raised, and we've had some further discussions and meetings with staff and with, with Trustee Warren and President McCaig and Village Manager Ewald. We all met together with the officers and we got a little bit more of an understanding, I believe, in terms of the actual policy at this point in time. And so we're basically just kind of bringing it back to just kind of rehash where we were with that at that point in time. So, Trustee Warren, did you want to speak about any of the stuff that we discussed in the meetings or anything of that nature?
I mean, do you want to, Trustee Stoker?
I would just like to say that having read through the information, I appreciate the work that you and Trustee Warren, President McCaig, manager Ewald, and everyone has done with the police. And I'm so grateful that you talked to them. Given the things outlined in the memo here, I would support keeping the pursuit policy as it is. The possible negatives are too too substantial for me to see changing it. And we already have one of the least restrictive on the North Shore, and we do very few. So I would be, I appreciate this extra work that was done on this, but it looks to me like we need to keep the policy that we have. Thank you.
Trustee Stoker, just one more, one minor thing, you meant most restrictive, right? I think that's what the memo.
I'm sorry?
You said least restrictive, I think you meant most restrictive.
Thank you, too important, yeah, thank you.
President McCaig?
Yeah, if I might suggest, if you just kind of take the moment, take the time to walk through the decision points that are laid out in the memo based on our conversation. That way, I think it gives, it's good for the record and also gives the committee a chance to weigh in. So, you know, Trustee Stoker shared her opinion, but I think it's just, it'll be helpful for the whole group. If you don't mind.
Sure, do you want me to do that, or Trustee Warren, or do you want me to go ahead and do that?
Well, if you know my mind, why don't you frame it up, just, you know, and this is, I agree, it'll make a good, a good record. People will watch this after the meeting, so they'll kind of want, you know, it'll frame up our discussion a little bit better.
Okay, so on November 3rd, we had meetings with all three shifts across the Police Department at various times of the day, so that way we can catch all three of them, or at least as many people as we could that were working. And basically, we're doing this to have a better understanding of the current policy and what implementing what Dr. Weiss had suggested, limiting it to violent felonies, what that would mean if we put that into practice. And, you know, what was discussed is that the Police Department's current policy regarding vehicle pursuits, we have a lot of mechanisms built into the policy, judgments and others, oversight that is built into the policy, basically to prevent overuse or unnecessary or unsafe policy or pursuits that would be governed by this policy. Some of the factors that we discussed when covering this here are the factors that go into deciding if a vehicle pursuit is necessary and if it serves the best interests of public safety. There's lots of things that, when the officers get involved in a pursuit, that they have to take into account, the type of offense, the, the nature of the offense, the road conditions, the weather, pedestrians, traffic and, you know, patterns, whatever the case may be. You know, and basically have to balance this desirability to engage in this pursuit versus, are we, you know, is it something that we should be doing, even just because we're justified, doesn't mean necessarily that it's desirable to do it. You know, we discussed the annual updates on training that the officers have to go through and that the guidance that is put in place through that training that officers have to go through in these decision-making processes to decide whether or not they are going to continue in these pursuits. The supervisors' responsibilities and roles were discussed. And, and again, the same decisions that they have to go through based on their training, whether or not we should continue with the pursuits. You know, things assessing risk factors and trying to convey all that information during the course of pursuit. And then also the fact that any officer involved in the pursuit can terminate the pursuit at any time, even if they're a lower rank. And if in their judgment that it's not in the best interest to continue to pursue it, or it's unsafe to do so. Other things that were discussed were discouraging the extended pursuits related to misdemeanors, municipal violations and traffic offenses. And why the wording discouraging was used, was discussed. And, and some of the things that we would not be able to pursue if we went with just violent felony would include operating while intoxicated, subjects that are, that we believe are operating a motor vehicle intoxicated. If that didn't raise to the level of a felony offense, we wouldn't be able to continue to try to stop that person. There could be the potential where we could be trying to stop someone that we believe is operating while intoxicated. And they will continue on, and essentially, we would have to stop that action of trying to stop that person because it didn't meet our, our current policy. Whereas if we continued on, our lights would be on or visible for quite a ways. Our siren would be audible so that people who are approaching, who we'd be approaching in the course of doing that pursuit activity could at least hear it and potentially get out of the way of this dangerous subject that we'd be trying to stop. Other things that we wouldn't be able to stop would be if we had domestic violence subjects who were fleeing from the scene and had made threats to come back and harm the victim, we wouldn't be able to pursue after them because that would not necessarily fall under the violent felony that was being recommended. Just trying to see, make sure I'm hitting all my notes off of this here. Again, you know, we have the biannual training that officers go through, where they don't just go and they sit in a classroom and, and watch a PowerPoint. They actually get out onto a closed track and engage in vehicle pursuits based off of scenarios. And they basically go through a realistic scenario and deal with whatever it is that is presented with them and make their decision points in the course of doing that, so that they can put some of this classroom theory into practice. And we go through that training every other year, we're required to do that through the state of Wisconsin. And then also, we do post pursuit reporting. We have supervisory reviews of all of our pursuits. And we do a debrief of the pursuit with everybody that was involved and talk about why we engaged in that activity, what things did we encounter along the way, what if, what if anything could we have done better? What if anything could we have done differently, so that we can learn and improve our performance in these areas along the way? Another thing that was discussed was the fact that there is no legal definition of a violent felony by state statute. And if we went to this, we as the municipality would actually have to define what the violent felony would mean and then also create a list of offenses that would meet that definition or term. Violent felony would mean and then also create a list of offenses that would meet that definition or or term. And if we went with the violent felonies restriction, we required officers not pursue offenders or suspected of the OWIs like I talked about domestic disputes, as I had talked about. It would also limit our eliminate our ability to assist in other vehicle pursuits by other other jurisdictions. If they did not meet the violent felony definition that we had and with regards to. Somebody's pursuits that are being engaged in Milwaukee County here, motor vehicle thefts have been a huge problem throughout the county. And the vehicles that have been used or that have been stolen have subsequently been used in more violent offenses. Up to and including homicide. And this would now limit our ability to perhaps pursue a vehicle of that. Type and limit potential for further. Uh, violent crime that could potentially happen if we just chose to let that vehicle. Get away essentially. I think that hit most of the, if not all, the discussion points that we had.
Thank you, thank you, Captain Leventhal. Any comments or questions from the trustees, Officer Gavani or President McKay? Okay, well, I I'll just say that, you know, I was. I had the chance. I'll go to you first, trustee Arndrofer.
Sorry about that. Yeah, thanks again for going through the decision making process and as we discussed last time. Um, I mean, I from all observation I can make, including talking with an officer that was involved in something that appeared, you know, if not a full. You know, full bore pursuit, it was pretty close to it, I mean, it seems a lot of good. As far as I can tell, a lot of good judgment is being exercised, I I do continue to think that there would be, we could benefit from some clear. Articulation of the parameters for. Cause for pursuit or, you know, for that procedure. I recognize the violent felony piece, you know, could be problematic. I mean, I was, I was looking at some language, you know, you know, model policy by the International Association of Chiefs of Police, which lays out, sorry, try to be fast here. Sorry, lost it. Perfect. That I think would be consistent with what, you know, we're. You know, is being talked about here. All right, pursuit is just quoting from this right now, pursuit is authorized only if the officer has a reasonable belief that the suspect, if allowed to flee, would present a danger to the human life or cause serious injury. And general pursuits for minor violations are discouraged. The decisions to initiate pursuit must be based on the pursuing officer's conclusion that the immediate danger to the officer and the public created by. The pursuit is less than the immediate or potential danger to the public should the suspect remain at large. I mean, I think that that provide. I think an articulation like that provides. Parameters that are clearly understood. You know, by officers and and by the public as well. But still allowing for some discretion by. You know, officers, I mean, I don't want to. You know, not posing taking the pen on anything right now, but that that's, I I'd still think that there could be some benefit. You know, to clear our articulation of some parameters, recognizing the comments made about violent. You know, about. Limitations of a violent felony definition. I guess the one other thing. Small thing, the policy states under three oh six three two that extended. Extended pursuits of violation violators for misdemeanors, municipal violations. And traffic offenses are discouraged, I mean, should we just? Could be unless it's a distinction without a difference, I mean, I think might make more sense to say pursuits, just drop extended. That's what I got, thank you very much.
Thank you, trustee Arndrofer, President McKay?
Thank you. Yeah, I think what I've kind of my observation has been, you know, those components that that are in the language that the sample policy that you shared. Trustee Arndrofer, those components are in our policy, they might be worded slightly differently. I noticed in reviewing. The policies from the surrounding jurisdictions that some of them are formatted a little differently, like with different kinds of headings. It doesn't mean that our policy doesn't have that, the same meaning or intent or direction or guidance. It's just presented a little differently. Um, and so one of the things we talked about is if if in one of the goals is to educate the public and the board. As well as guide the officers on daily operations. And so if there is a way that we can revise policies in format or in. You know, certain clauses of language or something like that. To to make that a more of a shared understanding, I think that that's a positive thing. But I guess I want to distinguish between that and actually changing. The policy, you know what I'm saying, so. The way that you that sample policy. In my, in my review of the. Material and these discussions and correct me if I'm wrong, Officer Gavani or Acting Chief Leventhal. Those things that you read from that policy are in our policy. It doesn't, that policy doesn't contradict our policy. And am I wrong about that? Anyone show of. Okay, so if we want them to just change the language of the policy, like rewrite it for style or for format. I just want the committee to be clear that that's you can. You, we can. Ask the department to do that and we might want to wait for a new chief, just because it is, I don't know how many policies would need to be reformatted in this way or or the language changed. But just give that direct. That direction to the department and and make a distinction between you're not changing. The content of the policy if you want just the language of it to change, does that make sense? The parameters, you're not really changing the parameters, you might be changing the language or where it falls, where it's stated in the policy.
President McKay? Trustee Arndrofer?
Yeah, I I I guess one of the reasons I did raise it is I I agree that the spirit of the policy, I mean, with what I just read, I mean, I think it's very borne out by the spirit of the policy right now. I don't, I don't really see any contradiction between the two, I I do think that clear articulation should be helpful. I mean, I guess I would defer as to whether there's any nuance in in that language that might suggest. Differences or not, but that's hair splitting, but yeah, I. Would agree with what you laid out there. Thanks.
Thank you, trustee Arndrofer, trustee Stokerbrand?
I guess I'm confused, so. Are we, I thought we were being asked to provide direction on the current. Shorewood Police Department pursuit policy. And so. And you're saying we can change the formatting. But we should. Is there, and I'm and trustee Arndrofer, can you tell me specifically on the page where where you want the change made? I'm confused what you want, I'm confused what you and President McKay want. I thought we were being asked about the current policy.
No, to be clear, I don't want anything. I want the committee to decide if they want it changed to violent felony only. And that's really the only action and direction or direction that's being asked at this point. If if you want different phrases or formats, that's a different kind of direction and it's not content based or it doesn't change what the officers would do or not do. And so my, what I heard in trustee Arndrofer is. A suggestion of writing some of the. Maybe some language a little bit more strong in the and directive in the policy. But the content of the policy is all there, so I don't want anything, I'm just trying to. Be clear because if the, if you want something to change at all, you have to be really clear with officers what it is that you want changed. But violent felony is the only thing that's that's related to the recommendation.
And that's not defined by state statute, right? So that to me is a problem because then then we need to define. What a violent felony is and I. I guess that's where I'm not comfortable. I think you need to leave a felony a felony and not try to predict what's a violent felony, I I would have a hard time telling an officer. What I think a violent felony is.
I guess. You know, their trustees are raising their hands, so I'll just say, you know, it was. I I'd like to thank the Shorewood Police Department for meeting with me and kind of talking this over, you know, I've done a lot of. Done done research on this and. You know, one thing, you know, I was pretty bullish on switching to violent felony last last meeting, I think that was pretty clear. After after looking at it, a couple of things resonated with me as I as I looked at the issue further in anticipation of this meeting. First off, what trustee Stokerbrand just said. I think if you. If you switch to a violent felony standard, you're switching to an undefined standard, which I think is inherently problematic. I think that actually opens up Pandora's box to more issues, if you have this nebulous standard that's going to be applied differently. You know, because there's no definition, it could be applied differently across the entire police department, you don't know. Definition of violent, if we don't take it upon ourselves to define it, it could be completely different from officer to officer. Uh, the second thing that resonated to me in my conversations was the impact of a change to this, you know, higher and and admittedly more nebulous standard. Talking about not being able to to stop for OWIs and I understand that there's an argument, you know, you could. Pursue for OWIs, arguing you're pursuing. You know, you're you're pursuing someone who's drunk, but you're also, as as Captain Leventhal said, you know, you have your lights and sirens blaring, it alerts people to get out of the way and hopefully that results in a stop. Furthermore, you know, in the field, I would imagine that. Ascertainment of whether something is violent or not. On the fly, I I see all kinds of issues there, holding officers to a standard that they. Can't possibly hope to achieve. The other thing I asked myself, you know, given our twelve, our twelve. Twelve chances, twelve pursuits per year, is this, does this really become kind of a solution insert for problem, do we, do we have the tools and mechanisms in place to audit on the backend? And you know, it goes back to what, you know, this is a little bit outside of the scope of our discussion, but reading through the. Reading through the policy itself, you know, I do think there could be some clarification, better section heading, so people. And and residents really know what the policy is all about, it kind of doubles back on itself a little bit, but I don't have specific recommendations within this meeting, but I certainly think it could be clearer. And I really think that once you get that clarity, maybe there are tweaks we can make here or there, but I think the. They think all the tools and mechanisms are there, the only thing I might add and I might think about going forward, and again, we're a little outside of the scope here, is maybe including the pursuits. And the report out to HRC quarterly. Again, there seems that there's interest in this. This is something that, you know, we've had a lot of discussion around and maybe it's something that, you know, for even even greater transparency. As to what these pursuits look like, we would report them out to HRC along with the complaints, they could be bundled together. Um, so those are my thoughts as I as I as I went through, I don't, I do not support a move to the to the violent. Felony standard at this point, it's undefined and I think creates a subset of issues. Uh, in addition, I think the impacts would outweigh any benefits to that standard. Seeing no other hands up, I will now open it up to any public comment on the matter. If you have a comment, please raise your hand and state your name and address. My puppy is now getting on my lap, seeing none. I suppose, is this, is this actually a motion or is this just to provide direction? Because I think we're.
I believe it's direction.
I I think the thing, Captain Leventhal, do you have what, do you have what you need, I think we're pretty, I think we're pretty.
Yep.
What is on the table here?
Yeah, we should be good.
But I think so to wrap it up, it seems like it's unanimous between the three community that the standard should not increase to a violent felony only.
I agreed, and I I also think that there is some. I mean, at least, at least, there might be some. Discussion of this in the future as opposed, like, again, I'd like to, I'd like to discuss kind of clarifying and potentially reporting out to HRC, but that's, I realize that's not agendicized. For tonight, so I'll. I'll let it go until it feels such time as it is agendicized, but there's interest, at least on my part there. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think that wraps our agenda for the night.
I don't think there's anything else, as far as I know.
I'll I'll eat dinner before the village board meeting. If we, if I have, if if we have a motion to adjourn, trustee Stokerbrand, I'll go over to you.
Motion to adjourn.
As comfortable as I am having forty two minutes back second.
The motion in a second, all those in favor? Hi, any opposed? No, motion or meeting, meeting adjourns at six forty eight PM, thank you for the great discussion, everyone.
Thanks, Officer Gavani.
Thank you.
Thank you.